Order the Norwood City School District Regular Board of Education meeting for Thursday, August 19th, 2021. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Mrs. Rayber.
I did.
Mrs. Verrick.
Present.
All right, item number 1.02 is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.04 in our agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to move that we put the public speaking before the education, or at least somewhere in the beginning of the meeting, and then add to education a discussion of the mask.
So we have to...
Or the safety guide.
We have to technically vote on approving that, then we can discuss that, but I was gonna do the exact same thing. So I'm gonna...
Motion to...
I'm gonna motion to accept the agenda, so that way we can talk about it in a second.
Hold on. So what is your motion?
So we have to, motion to adopt before we can talk about changes. So I am motion to adopt.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to adopt our agenda?
And then the suggestion, change discussion would be to move it, I would suggest after number two, before number three, so that way Mr. Peters can go ahead and give his report, and before we begin our reports. So that way, especially since we have little ones here with us, I'd like to make sure we have taken into consideration their time and effort for coming out tonight.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I second it.
So this motion is just to move the public speaking?
Correct. So we can do our public speaking first and our reading of any emails that are present before we proceed.
All right, so the sub-motion on the floor is to move public speaking up in the order of the agenda after the presentation or before the presentation?
I would suggest after Mr. Peter.
Okay.
And before
The Education Committee.
Education Committee and all of our committee reports.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Alice, you had one other portion to add.
My other suggestion is then add to the education portion just a discussion of the back-to-school safety package, just so we can give a response to, even if you just wanna say, we talked about this, da-da-da-da-da, it just gives you a place to say that.
Okay. I say we just handle those separately, so...
Okay, so...
So at least we can give some closure to, they said things, we said a thing.
Right. So, but the motion on the floor is to just move the public participation up right now, so, and that's been seconded.
So let's vote on that portion.
Let's vote on that. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll on that.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Verrick.
Yes.
Okay, so the public participation has been moved in the agenda to after our presentation. Anything else?
I move that we add to the education portion a discussion of the back-to-school safety packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I already said the same.
Okay. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
No.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
No.
Mrs. Verrick.
Yes.
Two to two, that motion fails. So now we still have the motion on the floor to adopt the agenda. I'd like to remind everybody that if we don't adopt our agenda, the next motion is to adjourn because we can't have a meeting. Any other discussion on this?
So with regard to public speaking, I wanna make sure the public is aware, we can't really respond during the meeting to that, which is why Ms. Verrick is making this motion, so that we have an opportunity to respond formally. At this time, I think it might be good to continue with our meeting, and we may end up needing to discuss this at a further date or having a special meeting, so that way it gives us time to digest all the information presented to us today, and that way we can take everything in fairly. Otherwise, we do have to postpone and have an entirely separate meeting, and no one gets to talk tonight. I would rather hear from the public, so I would like to maybe change my vote and support moving forward and giving us time to digest the information.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted.
I'm just saying. I voted to not.
Unfortunately, I'm not able to be there, but I would support having more discussion about our plan at another time. Can't be there, so do it tonight. Be supportive of doing, of continuing with the meeting like I ever said, but discussing it at another time.
Okay. I concur with that.
Okay.
So, so now the motion on the floor is to adopt our agenda as amended with moving the public speaking section of it to after the presentation. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Verrick.
No, I think that they deserve us to say something back. Also, a lot has happened this week, and I think that we should address that, but here we go.
Here we go. All right, next on the agenda, now that it's been adopted, is items 1.05, 1.06, and 1.07. These are the minutes for our regular board meeting on July 22nd, the minutes for our committee meeting held August 10th, and the minutes from our special meeting also held on August 10th. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Verrick.
Yes.
All right, with the minutes approved, we'll move on to the next item in our agenda, and that's the presentation. We have a construction update from Mr. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start with Norwood View. Construction's come along very well. We're still down to a handful of punch list items. These are mostly just, you know, several spots that could use an extra coat of paint, maybe a couple of ceiling tiles that still need to be put back in place, a handful of HVAC issues. I think I heard that the gym is a little bit more on the humid side, but they're dealing with that. Out in the parking lot, we did get the seal coating done on the parking lot in the playground last week. We would like to get the lines painted back, both the place, play area lines and stuff, and the parking space lines. We are having a little trouble getting paint delivered, so that may happen sometime next week, but it will, it will happen as soon as the paint comes in. Just as every summer happens, as we, as we get this time of year, as school opens up, we have a lot of the Scarlet and Gray employees, the Norwood maintenance guys, we're staying on top of the trash as much as possible. It seems that sometimes as soon as we clear a hallway of trash, teachers can, or staff can come in that evening, and we come in the next day and there's a pile of trash again, especially moving boxes, especially after they've had to move this year. So that's kind of a challenge, but it's par for the course. Over at Williams Avenue, abatement has been completed. That's a really big thing for, in my mind. Everything else seems to be going along on schedule. One, one thing I would like to share with everyone, though, is with this new elevator we're putting in, and it's a bi-level building, so basically, and, and we use the landings to try to get from a halfway stop of an elevator to the other side of the building, at kind of like a halfway point. What we learned about a week ago was there was a, once we tore out a plaster wall, there was a support beam which would kind of be right at somebody's shoulders level as they're walking out of that elevator stop. So that's, that's, it's been a challenge, but, but it's nothing they say can't be dealt with. But I just thought it was an interesting aspect when you're talking about putting an elevator in a bi-level building. Over, over at the high school, again, everything is coming along together well. That too has its challenge of trying to get everything done in basically three summers, as opposed to having the whole year to work like we have in the elementary buildings. We're very grateful to have the extra time this summer. I think there was like a week added into the summer, so, so that was very helpful. I would say about 90% of ceilings and light fixtures were installed as of yesterday or Tuesday, I think it was, mostly on, oh, well, on the top two floors, so that's coming along well. Scarlet and Gray, as well as the Norwood employees are, and the construction company's cleaning crew have been going around in classroom to classroom and then hallways and trying to spruce things up and get rid of all the dust. It is, it is coming well, coming together well, so we're, I think we're in pretty good shape. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Peter?
The view is beautiful.
Yeah, I did just walk over there.
Did you go up there?
The top two floors look wonderful with the new lights and the new ceilings.
It make, it makes a world of difference.
But the gym level, that won't be done, correct? So that'll have to wait till next summer.
The gym level.
Well, that's second floor, I guess. It's this far, it's go, when you go across the bridge, no, it's down a floor from when you go across the bridge. I know the floors don't matter.
Yeah, I think the only thing that low is the gym.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, but the top two floors look great.
Good, good.
Thank you, Mr. Peter.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next section in our agenda, we have moved the hearing of the public. And so we're gonna have that now. We do have, three people have signed forms to address us in person. So I'm going to, like we do with every public participation, I'm gonna read the, the policy so that everyone's on the same page. So "To further improve the communication between the community and the board, time shall be allocated at each regular or special board meeting to hear the public and/or representatives of school-related organizations. Public participation at committee meetings is limited to those invited to speak on specific issues. Each person addressing the board shall fill out a form listing name, address, an agenda, or non-agenda item, and hand the form to the board president." I have three of those tonight. "Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. No more than 15 minutes will be devoted to any one topic unless a majority of the board votes to continue the discussion. The speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations as concern them. However, the board will not hear any personnel complaints or complaints against wisdom comments should be brought to the attention of the administration and handled separately." And this was approved January 17th of 2019. Since we do have three people to speak on the same topic, and we have a number of emails that were sent to our public participation, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the 15-minute rule.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Rayber, it's virtual. Mrs. Verrick.
Yes.
Okay. So the first speaker that handed in a form is Mr. Eric Thompson from 2323 Indianmount Avenue. Mr. Thompson, we have a table up here with a microphone. Thank you for coming, and you have five minutes.
All right, thanks for having me. I came here today to speak about the mask requirements for the school. I come as, as a father of two twins, getting ready to go into middle school this year. But before I get into that, most of you know me as a, as a city councilman here in Norwood. And I would like to say that in four years of being on council, I can't ever remember us voting to not hear a discussion from another councilperson that they felt needed to be heard. And I'm pretty disappointed to hear the, the motion from Ms. Verrick and not pass. That's, it seems that you all come together to discuss these things, and when someone has something they want discussed, I think you should be allowed to discuss it, and I'm disappointed that you voted not to. And I am slightly, glad to hear that you might discuss it in the future. Getting back to the mask, I would point out that everybody in here is wearing a mask, and we're all seated at least 10 feet apart, and that's something that you voted during your last meeting, not to extend to the children in this school. I believe this, this particular topic deserves further discussion based on a couple of factors. One, the governor just released a statement this past week. I will read it to you. It's very brief. "With the Delta variant producing so many cases today, it'll be very difficult to keep it out of the classroom, and it will be impossible, once it is in the classroom, to keep it from spreading unless students wear masks and/or are vaccinated. Without something to stop the virus, it will dramatically increase the number of children who have to quarantine, and dramatically increase and dramatically decrease the number of schools that continue in-person learning. Our children can simply not afford another disruptive school year." The second thing I think brings, or adds, makes us want to discuss this further, is Norwood's actual COVID numbers. So this week, the health department released numbers. We have 69 active cases that we know about in Norwood. 15 of those are under the age of 18. We haven't seen numbers like 69 since the spike during the winter. I realize that the primary focus of this board is usually to provide the best education possible for our students, but when we're faced with a global pandemic that's killed over 600,000 people in this country, I, I believe your, your primary focus shifts a little bit, and that's to provide for the health and well-being of our students and staff while trying to provide the best education possible. So right now, we're in a situation where health and well-being, I think actually Trump providing the best education possible, and I'll, I'll get into that in a little bit. You're probably hearing lots of voices, and, you know, anti-mask, anti-vax, people tend to be very loud, but those voices, they're not the voices of experts, and they are not the voices reflecting expert opinion. I think it is the board's job to listen to experts and to expert opinion about this matter. I've heard the parents say that they should have the right to choose for their parents to, or for their parents, for their children to wear masks in school. I think that would be okay if masks only protected the wearer from the virus, but the mask, as we all know, because we've been going through this for to protect the wearer. So if somebody wanted to send their child to school not wearing a mask and place them into the large giant human Petri dish that is public education, that's their own business. But not wearing a mask makes it possible to spread this to other people. That's a key point. I think the board needs to listen to experts. Experts overwhelmingly agree that masks help in this matter. And so I think what you're looking at in this coming year is, in order to provide a safe learning environment, you're left with a fairly simple choice, though it might be considered a lesser of two evils. And I believe your choice is one of, do we choose distraction for our students, or do we choose disruption for our students? Nobody is going to sit up here and tell you that wearing a mask isn't distracting. We've been doing it for over a year now. We had a little break over the summer while the numbers were down. But the price of not wearing masks is the potential for major disruption of this school year.
Mr. Thompson, your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person to address the board comes from Mr. Julian and Mrs. Ann Abroad from 2266 Highland Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Abroad, for being here and addressing us. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity. I'd first like to read something that my, my wife prepared. She wanted to be here in person, but unfortunately, time didn't allow. In updated guidance for the 2021-22 school year, the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly recommends in-person learning. In addition to vaccinations, the AAP recommends a layered approach to make schools safe for all students, teachers, and staff. That includes a recommendation that everyone older the age of two wear masks regardless of vaccination status. It is critical to use science and data to guide decisions about the pandemic in school COVID-19 plans. All students older than two years and all school staff should wear face masks at school unless medical or developmental conting, conditions prohibit use. The AAP recommends universal masking in school at this time for the following reasons. A significant portion of the student population is not eligible for vaccination. Protection of unvaccinated students from COVID-19 and to reduce transmission. Lack of a system to monitor vaccine status among students, teachers, and staff. Potential difficulty in monitoring or enforcing mask policies for those who are not vaccinated. Possibility of low vaccination uptake with the surrounding school community, and continued concerns for variants that are more easily spread among children, adolescents, and adults. Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, the CDC, the Ohio Governor Mike DeWine, Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center, the World Health Organization, and UNICEF have all unanimously endorsed this same guidance. It's not as simple as saying parents who want to spread, protect their kids against COVID-19 can have their kids wear a mask. Masking works when it's utilized universally. Without masks, schools and all children in our district face the continued uncertainties we experienced last year. By not requiring universal masking in schools, you're not only exposing every child in this district to unnecessary risk, you are taking away our ability to choose, to follow the direction of the American Academy of Pediatrics, which is comprised of over 70,000 pediatricians. There is no parent, school, board member, or local health department qualified to undermine the guidance of 70,000 pediatricians. We have four children starting school this fall. One of them is a four-year-old. She is medically fragile due to a mitochondrial defect. She's enrolled in William, Williams Elementary, a school that does not currently require mask use. During periods of illness, her body struggles to maintain metabolic control, which can lead to life-threatening hypoglycemia and acidosis. There's not yet enough data to determine how COVID-19 will impact children like her. However, the doctors who have dedicated their lives to researching, these questions agree that masking will protect her. They recommend not just that she wear a mask, they recommend everywhere, everyone wear a mask. Last week, a board member brought the very relevant fact that when a child has a significant allergy to peanuts, we don't expose them during school, even if it means requiring others, others to modify their own behaviors. When it's determined peanuts are dangerous to a child, the school prevents exposure in every reasonable, possible way. I don't know if I'm permitted to say what I had to say. That was what my, my wife wants to say.
You've got a minute and a half.
When I thought about this, I realized this is a difficult decision for a board to make. This isn't a balancing equation act. You're not taking numbers on one side and balancing the other. You're not distributing funds amongst different initiatives. You've got our principles on one side, how we raise our children, and how, what we expose them to. And on the other side, you have your facts and your experience. Those two can't, you can't use rules to balance that equation, okay? My, my principles tell me that education is super important. I wanna be able to decide how my children, how my girls dress. I don't like others telling me how they should dress. But I also believe it's important for kids to play and learn together. The facts tell me that COVID is more contagious and dangerous than ever. Even with masks, my kids aren't 100% safe. But we've shown that masks can be very effective in this district at preventing spread. I guess ultimately it comes down to the fact that COVID doesn't care about my principles. They don't protect me.
Mr. Abroad, your five minutes is up.
But if we put up enough blocks and protections, then maybe I can still live by some of the principles that are most important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abroad. All right, and the final speaker to address us tonight in person is Mr. Jared Geary from 4125 Bell Street. Mr. Geary, thank you for coming to address us tonight. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm here today to voice my concern for the decision made last week to not implement universal masking, as well as my utter disbelief at how it was discussed at certain points of the, of the meeting. First, the reasoning behind not implementing universal masking, being that it would be a hard sell to parents, is infuriating. Selling policy to parents is not the job of the superintendent and this board. You have a responsibility to keep students safe, students and staff as safe as possible. When the question was asked multiple times about what the threshold would be to require masks, the only real answer that was given was that more kids have to get sick. More kids have to get sick? How many kids' health and education are you willing to put at risk because you don't want to make a hard sell to parents? Per your plan, you are not completely against universal masking, so why wait until more kids get sick when you all admitted that you expect to see a large spike in November? I find it absolutely absurd to knowingly put more kids at risk when you have an easy, non-intrusive way to prevent it with wearing masks. And saying that those that want to wear them can is not enough. That is not how masks work in preventing spread, and I think that most of you know that. Masks are most effective when everyone is wearing them. Last school year is proof of that, and there are multiple peer-reviewed published studies that support it. And I'm more than happy to provide those citations, but I expect that the DART team has already done their research and knows what the data says. It's not just an individual choice, as some folks like to say. It is caring for others and how you protect the community as a whole. Moreover, and it cannot be emphasized enough, this is the only line of defense that children from pre-K to sixth grade have. They are unable to even choose to get the vaccine, unlike older grades in staff. All the other precautions, like three feet of distancing, which we all know does not happen 100% of the time. Hand washing and Plexiglas mean next to nothing without universal masking. I also found it extremely misleading and manipulative to say that you are following the guidance from the Ohio Department of Health when you know that they are unable to tell you to implement masks. They are legally barred from requiring masks or even suggesting that you require them. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, Children's Hospital, and now even the governor are imploring districts to implement universal masking. The idea that there is high spread surrounding Norwood for miles and miles, every county in Ohio, Indiana, and Kentucky, except for three, there's only three counties in the three surrounding states, that it's not high spread. But somehow Norwood's in its own little bubble. It's ridiculous. Many other districts are changing their plans from what they previously agreed on to now require masks, including the largest urban district and largest suburban district in southwest Ohio. Norwood can choose to do the same. COVID still exists. The Delta variant is demonstrably more contagious, and we are not immune from it. At the end of the day, I'm not here to be a checkmark in a column that is for requiring masks, as if it should be up to a popular vote. The district should require masks because it is the right thing to do. Our students are not some abstract data points. Even if this prevents one child from contracting COVID, it is worth it to do it for that one kid. Universal masking means less kids are sick, which means more kids are in the classroom getting quality in-person instruction, and invaluable time with their peers without interruption. Isn't that the ultimate goal here? Kids getting an education as safely as possible using all of the tools and preventative measures we have available.
Thank you, Mr. Geary. So that concludes all of the in-person speakers. We do have a number of emails that were sent to the public participation email address. I tried to divide them up as evenly as possible amongst the four board members here. I tried to divide them up as evenly as possible amongst the four board members here. So I guess we could just start with Alice. If you want to read your set, and then I'll go, we'll just go around the horseshoe.
The whole set?
Yeah, just the whole set.
Read them all, not just one?
Just read all the emails that you have, and then I'll go next.
Let me take a note of mine. This is gonna be a lot.
I was gonna say, it might help to do one at a time and rotate, because some of these are a little longer than others.
If you want to do that, that's fine. Alice, go ahead and read the first one, and then I'll go next.
All right. First one's from Nathan Swartzen-Dreber. I like saying his name. Okay. "This weekend, I'll be setting up a quarantine room in our attic. I hope we won't need to use it, but with the highly infectious Delta COVID variant all around us and masks optional in Norwood schools, there's a greater risk than last year of students catching and spreading COVID. When it comes to contagious diseases, health is a public matter. When people choose not to follow precautions like mask-wearing, their personal choice raises the risk for everyone around them. Smoking is now prohibited in restaurants based on the same logic. Sitting at a table six feet apart doesn't keep the smoke away. I'm sure you've seen the news on sharp increases in COVID rates throughout the country and of schools that are quarantined dozens or even hundreds of students and teachers because they've been exposed. If your priority is to keep kids learning in classrooms, mandating masks is a necessary step, along with steps you're already taking to increase air ventilation and filtration. COVID is mainly an airborne virus. It's absurd that the CDC was so slow to understand this, but we know it now. This last year has been exhausting. I'm back to work in a shared office, and I'm tired of wearing a mask, but I keep doing it. We're still taking precautions because COVID is still with us, and kids who can't be vaccinated yet are vulnerable. There's no drill to practice like for a fire, or tornado, or active shooter. When the school doors open on Wednesday, there are sure to be kids walking through them who've been exposed. This is the reality. Wearing masks isn't complete protection, but we can't say we're doing all we can to protect kids without mandating masks. Please follow the lead of other school systems in southwest Ohio and mandate mask-wearing indoors. Sincerely, Nathan Swartzen-Dreber."
All right. So some of us may have multiple emails from the same person. I tried to split them up that way. So if you have another email from the same person and you want to read, I don't know if that person sent in.
I think his wife sends some, but not him.
Okay.
I have one from somebody with the same last name.
Okay, so you have his wife's email. Okay. So I'll go next. I have one from Sarah Salder, and I believe she has another one in somebody's stack. But it reads, "In rereading my previous email, I fear my outrageous typos may have overshadowed my point of view. As a work-at-home mom holding a wiggly baby and typing poorly, I hope my point of view is heard amongst the insane amount of typos in the last email. I'm concerned for my child and all of our children, and I hope you will reconsider universal masking this year.
All right, I have two emails from the same author. These are from Erica McClure. The first email is, "I find it very disheartening and upsetting that we are waiting until children get sick to mandate masks. What will it hurt to start the year in masks? It's going to be much easier to do away with masks later than to get people on board to wear them later. I think this is a very poor decision, and I am truly disappointed in the lack of care and concern for our students and families." The second email that she sent, "If mask mandates aren't in place, then the safety handbook is senseless. You're acknowledging the seriousness of COVID, yet you're not doing something that has scientifically been proven to slow the spread. What is the rationale behind this? I truly do not understand how you can set all of these quote-unquote 'safety precautions' without including a mask mandate. Eventually, it's not going to make a difference how socially distant you think you're keeping students if students aren't wearing masks. Students, our children, are going to get sick. It's disgusting and condescending to wait until our children start getting sick before you mandate masks. It's irresponsible to not take every precaution you can to keep our children and community
I have one from Rebecca Swartzen-Dreber. She says, "Hello, I am writing as a concerned parent of two Williams Avenue Elementary students. I'm extremely disappointed in the Board of Education and the superintendent's decision not to put in place a universal masking mandate at Norwood City Schools for the beginning of this school year. This decision goes directly against the CDC, the APA, the WHO, and many leading and respected scientists and epidemologists, sorry, epidemiologists, who recommend masking mandates in schools. My children are too young to be vaccinated, and a vaccine for children under 12 could still be months away. Masking is currently the only protection they have against this virus. The email that was sent to parents last week from the school superintendent stated that the district is following the Ohio Department of Health recommendations to strongly encourage masking. While the director of the organization and the governor of Ohio no longer have the political power to mandate masking in schools, both strongly encouraged schools to mandate masking in their joint press conference earlier this week. They pleaded with schools to mandate masking not because they are wielding any political power, but because it is the right thing to do. It will help prevent needless illness, hospitalizations, and even deaths. There is still time for us as a school district to do the right thing. Other local school districts such as Mason, Lakota, and Middletown have reversed course and have implemented mask mandates to prevent outbreaks and quarantines that could mar the beginning of their school year. It's not too late for us to do the same and prevent needless illness, hospitalizations, and deaths in the city of Norwood. Thank you for your work on behalf of our community. Sincerely, Rebecca Swartzen-Dreber."
Oh, my turn. Okay, I have one from Kelly Krabs. "Good evening. My name is Kelly Krabs, and I have two children in the school district. I appreciate the opportunity to give my heartfelt thoughts and information in regards to masking of our children. I do not support mandatory masking of our children, teachers, and staff. This medical intervention should be a decision made by the families for their family. I absolutely support each family and individual's right to choose what is best for their physical, mental, and emotional health. I'd like to lay out some key points on masking and why it is critical that parents and guardians have the right to choose if there is a risk. There must be a choice. Human beings need to breathe oxygen and exhale carbon dioxide. Oxygen is 20.9% of the air we breathe in, but only 16% of what we breathe out. OSHA regulations state that any oxygen level below 19.5% is dangerous. Carbon dioxide is only at 0.04% in the atmosphere, but 4% of the air we breathe out, a hundredfold increase. Carbon dioxide toxicity begins when those levels are around 10%. Masks lower oxygen levels and raise carbon dioxide levels. Masks have varying degrees of effectiveness, but the more effective they are at blocking airflow, the lower your oxygen levels will be and the higher the carbon dioxide. Studies have shown that masks raise the complaints of shortness of breath, headaches, and dizziness, suggesting lower oxygen and higher carbon dioxide levels. Reputable publications such as The Lancet have reported there is scarce evidence that masks provide effective protection against respiratory infections. Masks disrupt normal patterns of airflow, leading to pathogens being deposited on chin, cheeks, and near eyes. A recent study out of South Korea showed that COVID-19 easily passed through several different types of masks. Masks can become virus straps, leading to increased chances for infection when you touch with your hands. The CDC has abundantly documented how well viruses can remain active on N95 respirator masks, and there is no reason to believe the results would be the same for other types of masks. There's no such thing as an asymptomatic carrier who has the virus without symptoms for weeks, months, or years. The New England Journal of Medicine recently published an article from several researchers claiming that wearing a mask outside of a healthcare facility offers little if any protection from infection. Children's, teachers, and staff should return to school without mask mandates. I'm confident and hopeful with logical interventions such as hand washing, personal hygiene, nutrition, and cleaning often-used surfaces, we as school district and community can tackle not just this virus, but many unwanted viruses that will circulate. I appreciate your time, understanding, and willingness to hear different points of view. I will also be attaching to this email government links and the medical literature that supports any claim I make above. Again, thank you for our community. Sincerely, Kelly Krabs."
All right. The next email that I have is from Allison Hunter, and she writes, "I incorrectly assumed that I can count on my fellow humans to have their heads on straight at this point. It is utterly outrageous to not require masks indoors. COVID-19, which is not a joke, is not gone. We did not beat it. The highly contagious Delta strain is thriving. It is reckless and immoral to sacrifice the health of our children for nothing. Until the children even have a chance to be vaccinated, everyone needs to be wearing a mask. Until we have the choice to vaccine the young, masking should not be a choice. Please review the numbers and statistics as you did last year. Things are not good. The only difference is people stopped caring. Two weeks after everyone stopped wearing a mask at my workplace, we had a COVID outbreak, and five people were positive, some still in the hospital and have not returned. The rest of us have returned to wearing masks, even vaccinated, as the CDC recommends. Review the science. This is a school after all. I remind you the basic science behind masks tells us it protects the other person more than the wear."
My next email is from Kelly Chirambolo. "Hello, I am writing to express my disappointment and frustration around how back-to-school is being handled. We are two weeks from the first day, and as a parent of an elementary school student, we have been provided no information beyond when the first day will be. While I empathize with the logistics to go into managing the start of a school year, it always feels that parents are left just having to wait till the last minute. Another issue is the decision to not have open houses or meet-the-teacher events. Younger students in particular can benefit from the opportunity to see where their classroom is and meet their teacher prior to the first day, especially students who may deal with anxiety that does not allow them to walk happily into situations blindly. Compound that with the fact that those of us moving from Williams Avenue to the middle school have not been given any information on how that will look. Our family has never stepped foot in the middle school. How am I supposed to prep my child for the first day of school? It often feels like assumptions are made that everyone just knows how things work here in Norwood. I can assure you this is not the case. Last night, the board chose to not mandate masks. Orientations have been held for transitioning middle schoolers. So why are we not able to hold a meet-the-teacher day for elementary school students? Stating it is due to COVID does not align. If that really is the concern, the parents should be able to sign up for a window of time so that not everyone will be there at once. Mandate masks for this participating in meet-the-teacher event if that's an issue. Participation in such an event is not required, so give us the option. We want students to be successful and come back for a new school year after last school year was nothing but normal, yet it feels like very little is being done to ensure in regards to back-to-school. I thank you for your consideration of this perspective. Thank you."
I have an email from John Shepherd. "Dear Norwood School Board members and superintendent, I would like to first thank you for your attention to this correspondence and the concerns contained within. While I know that many of these letters have been shared over the last several weeks supporting both sides of the issue, I felt it necessary to contribute points that have either been overlooked or perhaps could use additional sentiment. As a school district and a parent, we should all share the same principal objective: the health and safety of the children we are sworn to protect. A parent should not be forced into a corner to weigh the importance of quality education against their physical well-being. The path we are on now is unfairly and unjustly doing that. Masking is not an easy topic these days, but the issue and arguments should be rooted in the science only and avoid the political bias. The importance of this, especially for the K-6 age group, can't be understated as they represent 57% of a school population and are too young as of now for vaccination. We know that vaccination and masking are the two lines of defense we have, and the approach being taken now robs this age group of both, leaving them defenseless. It should be noted that even links published to the district website contain widely accepted masking guidance shared from the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and Cincinnati Children's Hospital. Each of these medical professional groups also tout the evidence that mask-wearing does less to prevent contracting the virus and more to prevent spread. This means that leaving it to an individual family decision does not cover the bases that help reduce the community's spread. While other school districts around us have already taken these measures necessary to protect their students, it would seem the approach taken by this board is to wait and react. Current CDC guidelines suggest an unmasked student quarantined following exposure, while the same is not true of a masked student. For a district that rightfully focuses on a mantra of every kid in school every day and any action now puts that philosophy in danger by having a revolving door of students unable to attend school in person, which is so vitally important. Time is on our side to make the decisions to operate safely, and this opportunity should not be wasted, leaving us relegated to inadequate reactive measures. We hope you will reconsider the current school restart safety guidelines to require masking for all, or at the minimum, masking for those not yet old enough to be vaccinated. Sincerely, John and Jennifer Shepherd."
I have one from Sarah Carter. "I'm writing to you as a mom of an incoming preschooler with an IEP. My son needs these services, but I will have to look into alternatives for him, as Norwood will not step up to the plate and require universal masking for our children. I understand it is tough for every family to navigate our new normal, but I am so, so disappointed in the members of our school board and voting to leave our children so vulnerable this new school year without universal masking. Delta is on the rise, and some states have hundreds of children hospitalized at this very moment with COVID. Our country is in the worst position it has been in yet for children during this whole pandemic, and we are expected to send our children to a school willing to ignore recommendations made by the AAP and our local CCHMC. T-Bid is letting our children down." That might be one of her.
Yeah, that's fine.
This, maybe it's this. "This is letting our children down. We know the science masking works. Why are we ignoring the science? Better yet, why did we quarantine at all, or mask at all, if we are willing to expose our children to the Delta variant? Will it take an outbreak at one of our schools to change your minds? Perhaps one of our own on a ventilator? A mob of angry parents with critically sick children? I implore you, keep our children safe, listen to the AAP, CCHMC, listen to the science. Require universal masking. A very concerned parent, Sarah Carter."
All right. The next one that I have is from Emily Neville. "Dear members of the Norwood School Board, I am writing as a pediatrician and a mother in Norwood to strongly urge you to reconsider mandatory masking for all K through 12 this incoming year. We all have the same ultimate priority to get our children back to in-person learning as safely as possible, but with the rise of the Delta variant, we cannot accomplish that goal without all staff and students wearing masks. The Delta variant is estimated to be two to three times as contagious as the original Alpha strain. In part, this appears to be because of strikingly high viral loads and infected individuals, and some individuals over 1,000 times higher than the original strain. Our colleagues in the southern U.S. are also reporting more critically ill children fighting COVID. At this point, we do not know whether this is related to increased numbers or the Delta variant itself. A major advantage of mandatory masks in schools would be a reduction in both transmission and viral load with exposure. This is particularly important for children under 12 who currently have no access to protective vaccines, but also for the 62% of the 12- to 19-year-olds in Hamilton County who remain unvaccinated. From a standpoint of childhood development and learning, masking also offers a way to prioritize uninterrupted in-person school. Last school year, repeated quarantining and testing taxed families' emotional and financial resources and repeatedly interrupted children's learning. Students exposed to COVID this year will have to quarantine again unless the children are universally masked and distanced three feet apart. In addition, masks will reduce the spread of other respiratory viruses that necessitate time out of school for testing. Over the last few weeks, the Health Collaborative has tracked COVID cases on an exponential rise, with cases doubling every 10 days. Norwood was highlighted in the last report as having one of the five highest case rates in the entire 14-county region. The Delta variant has changed the landscape, and I urge you to protect our children and educators by making masks mandatory. Sincerely, Emily Neville, N.D."
I think she attaches a letter to it, right?
It's a separate email.
Oh. Oh.
I thought you were...
Oh, yeah. No, that's the next email. Yeah, no, she sent in another email.
Okay.
That says, "Please see the attached letter from approximately 450 Cincinnati physicians in support of mandatory masks in schools." Thank you. And the letters attached with all the signatures for our view will make that part of the public record.
And then my next set, let's see here, I read that one. My next set has four separate emails from the same individual, so bear with me as I make sure these are in order. Let's see here, okay. These are all from Christina Albert. Dear Norwood Board of Education, I cannot express my level of shock and sadness when I heard the Norwood Board of Education decision not to mandate mask-wearing at their meeting on Tuesday, August 10. Those on the board who voted for this decision have not seriously considered the raw facts about the pandemic or care about our schools being breeding grounds for this new Delta variant. Norwood schools did such a great job last year with blended school year. I feel like Norwood did an even better job than other districts with keeping our community safe. And now we're going the opposite way with a more deadly variant. How does that make sense? Why are we going against the CDC recommendations for masking up indoors? If you don't have it as a mandate and only strongly recommend, the majority of students are not going to mask up. While kids may experience mild symptoms, we don't know the long-term health effects of this new variant, or if future variants will be more dangerous to our children. In the meantime, unmasked children are bringing the virus home and into our communities with serious and deadly consequences. My son has attended Norwood View through kindergarten to second grade, and I have been satisfied with the education he has received, and the teachers have done an amazing job, especially providing quality instruction despite the pandemic. However, I feel so strongly that I am placing my child and the community in danger by attending Norwood schools this year, that I am applying to other schools outside of the Norwood school districts that have a mask mandate. There are other Norwood families who are doing the exact same thing. I am baffled by this decision and hope the decision may be reversed by the start of the school year on August 25. Please reconsider for the safety of our community. Sincerely, Christina Albert." That was message one. Message two has an attachment. This could be Norwood if we don't mask mandate by the time school starts. Thank you for your consideration. And it includes an NPR article about the Palm Beach, Florida, school district who had 440 students quarantined due to Covid, with a link attached for reviewing. Email three. Good evening, Mrs. Ronan and Norwood Board of Education. I continue to be alarmed that Norwood decided to not have a mask mandate, especially after reviewing the recent updates from the CDC. Given the new evidence on the B1617-2 Delta variant, CDC has updated the guidance for fully vaccinated people. CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Children should return to full in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place. Why are you ignoring this and waiting until there are more cases? Waiting until people get sick is not the right strategy. Make the right choice and follow the CDC's recommendation. Don't be afraid of ignorant parents who only listen to what is right when people start getting sick or die. You have the power to make the right decision here and keep our kids and community safe. Please be strong against the ignorant and reconsider a mask mandate before school begins on August 25. Let's see. And finally, good evening, Norwood School Board. Please consider the following posted from NPR on Saturday, August 14. Early versions of Covid-19 largely spared children, but the Delta variant proved to be much less discriminating and has led to more child hospitalizations. Now healthcare workers on the frontlines say that there is another frightening prospect looming: a surge in children diagnosed with a combination of Covid and respiratory syncytial virus. Pediatric hospitals in Texas and around the country are reporting unreasonably early outbreaks of RSV, a respiratory virus that is mostly manifesting as a mild illness with cold-like symptoms in adults, but that can cause pneumonia and bronchitis in very young children. The CDC reports can be life-threatening in infants and young adults. At Texas Children's Hospital in Houston on Thursday, 25 of the 45 hospitalized pediatric patients were diagnosed with RSV as well as Covid-19, a hospitalization rate much higher than for either virus alone, according to officials. At the moment, there is little data available on the impact of contracting both viruses and whether the two together can make a person sicker. But health officials worry it could put young patients who are not eligible for the vaccine at greater risk. For those of you who don't think our children will be medically affected by this variant, the facts are telling you differently. Please do what you can for our Norwood kids to keep them safe and vote for a mask mandate. Christina Albert.
I have an email from Becky Absaloff. She says, "Dear Superintendent Ronan and members of the school board, I'm writing to express my support of mandatory masking for students in the Norwood School District. As I'm sure you're aware, the American Academy of Pediatrics not only recommends in-person learning, sorry, but also that everyone over age 2 wears masks regardless of vaccination status. I am confident that many other community members will be sharing information with you regarding best practices for mitigating Covid-19 spread in schools. I fully support following the scientific guidelines and procedures that include masking, social distancing, contact tracing, and quarantining as indicated. Children are psychologically resilient, particularly when the adults in their lives create a consistent, supportive, safe environment. A district-wide mask mandate eliminates inconsistency in children's school experience and increases safety. With all students wearing masks, the chance of group divisions decrease, and children can focus on learning, not on which classmate wears a mask and which doesn't. Mandated masks also may decrease the number of students or teachers absent due to quarantine or illness, again providing consistency and predictability in the classroom. District-wide masking also statistically decreases the odds that our children will know a classmate or staff member who dies or is hospitalized from Covid-19, again sparing them from the psychological distress of navigating grief and loss on such a personal level. Please don't underestimate the adaptability of children when they are provided the appropriate support to do potentially difficult things. They will be asked to follow rules they don't always like in support of the greater good throughout their lives, and wearing a mask to keep everyone safe is just one of those instances. What a unique opportunity to develop resilience, compassion, and community despite adversity. I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective. Thank you for the work you do. Sincerely, Becky Absaloff."
I think it's good to note that after her name, she lists her credentials.
Yeah, her signature, well, she signed it, "Sincerely, Becky Absaloff," but she does have a signature at the bottom. She is a clinical psychologist.
I have emails from Jeannie Stanton. I have lived in Norwood since 1998 when I bought a home here. Our daughter attended K through 4 at Williams Elementary School. We loved that school. We switched at that time, 5th grade, over concerns where these kids would be in 6th grade. I am shocked that you have decided to not require masks. The school our daughter attends now does and did require masks this year and last. How can you be so irresponsible in protecting these kids and every older child and adult that has or has not been vaccinated? I'm shocked and appalled at the disregard you are showing here in protecting children and adults from Covid. Sincerely, Jeannie Stanton." And I think this one is also from Jeannie. I wanted to reply and mention something that I didn't make clear in my earlier email. Since I live in Norwood, have friends we socialize with in Norwood, shop in Norwood, exercise in Norwood, et cetera. By non-masking at schools, you are also putting us at risk of spreading Covid and any variances, including Delta. Delta has personally caused some of our family members in the state of New York who are vaccinated to contract Covid and experience symptoms that range from uncomfortable to very uncomfortable. If everyone is exposed to Covid and passes it on to others, this is the multiplication problem of the disease. Positive people spread the virus, especially with the super-spreader Delta. It's extremely difficult for me to think how many people you are putting at risk by not requiring masks. And I have a question that I also failed to ask before. Have you consulted any pediatricians in this decision-making process? What is the science behind your decision? Our daughter's school contacted and worked with pediatricians from Children's Medical Center in order to make the correct, safe decision to wear masks. What doctor have you consulted in this time of a pandemic? FYI, copied the text from the article I sent attached to my prior email for ease of reading. Dear Superintendent and Board of Education members, we are writing to you as concerned pediatricians and parents. The physicians listed here are all grateful for the commitment you have shown by prioritizing in-person instruction to the children of your district this year. We hope you will strongly consider the community data as you make your final decisions regarding safety protocols for the start of the 2021 school year. In our practices, we have used community data and medical science to continue to provide health care since the start of the pandemic. We continue to wear masks in our practices and require masking of our patients to ensure every child who enters our office can be seen safely. We fully support the American Academy of Pediatrics Center for Disease Control, U.S. Department of Education, and Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center recommendation to start the school year with universal masking, to provide a safe return for every student and teacher due to this recent surge in our community and nation. Allowing optional masking in school is irresponsible, reckless, and not in the best interest of children. The following is a summary of important reasons why we write to you to help ensure students can start and remain in school in person this year. Universal masking was effective in preventing transmissions in schools last year, even in areas with high community transmission. Multiple studies in the U.S., including in Ohio, have shown this. The greater Cincinnati area has been at substantial to high community transmission of Covid-19 over the last several weeks due to the Delta variant. CDC recommendations for universal masking in school takes its data into account when making recommendations. If the current surge abates and we are in low transmission again, universal masking could be reconsidered. You can follow local community incidence rates on your local health department, CDC, or Covid-19 Center for Clinical and Transitional Science and Training websites. I don't think this kid goes here. Okay, Rosa Parks. So it's okay if I say a kid's name if it's in a story and they don't go to our school? Don't say the name?
Don't say the name. That's a percol violation.
A child, 9, a 3rd grader at Rosa Parks Elementary in Middletown builds a fort out of marshmallows Friday, December 11. The Delta variant is not only more transmissible than the original virus, but evidence shows that the affects children more significantly than previous strains. While vaccination prevents severe disease for teachers, children under 12 are not yet eligible, and many of those, 12 to 15, have not yet been vaccinated. According to recent data from the Health Collaborative in our region, only about 1/3 of the 12 to 18 have even started their vaccine series. This level is not high enough to reduce the school transmission without layered protection, including masks. There's more story. Any child who is not vaccinated and exposed in school will need to quarantine to home unless children are universally masked and distanced three feet. We have seen the negative effects that frequent quarantine can have on children, not only disrupting their learning, but their mental and physical health. Masking all will allow more children to stay in school. Other viral illnesses with symptoms similar to Covid-19 have also been on the rise. Testing is the only way to differentiate. Masks can help to reduce the transmission of these viruses, which will necessitate days out of school for testing an illness. Again, we greatly appreciate the work you have done to prepare for safe and consistent in-person learning for students, and we offer your support in the face of those criticizing what is clearly the right choice for kids. The children of our region need this and are depending on it. They deserve better than optional masking. Thank you for your consideration. This auth ed was submitted by the Board of Cincinnati Pediatric Society, which includes, and it lists a lot of doctors, and I do believe that Emily Neville is one of them in the 450, and that's the letter. I think this next thing is the one I already read.
Okay.
I've lived in Norwood since 1998. And here it is again. That is the same.
I am out of letters.
Do you have any more?
I have two.
You have two? How did that happen?
Well, I think because we had multiples.
Yeah, we have multiple. I can give one to him. I have one that just came in tonight.
Did it come in before or after 6:00?
It came in right at 6:00. We did this last time, and there's only one, so I'm happy to read it. If you want me to give one to Brandon, then we can each read one more, and we're good to go for the night. How's that? It's not like 12 more came in from like last time.
Yeah.
So just so you guys know, if we're going to start requiring, just like we have everybody sign in before a meeting, that the emails really need to be here by 6:00 so that we have the opportunity to print them out, it's a lot easier than trying to look them up on our phones during the meeting, but we're going to try to accommodate that because we didn't really make that clear the last time.
Well, it's also, it's the same courtesy for people who come to speak. You have to be here by a certain time. If you're going to send an email, please make sure it's here before the start of the meeting. Anyways, so the next email that I have to read comes from Paige Jessie. And she writes, "Hello, while there's a lottery list of reasons to require masks in schools, I want to specifically address the idea that we shouldn't because folks want kids to have some normalcy and a regular school year. Just because you want things to be normal doesn't mean that they are. I would love to not be having this conversation, not have to remember to grab a mask for my kids every day and let them skip on into school without reminding them to keep their mask over their nose. But that isn't the reality, and we will put all kids in harm's way if we try to pretend that it is. The goal is to keep kids in the classroom with as little disruption as possible, full stop. Every time a kid has any symptoms, whether it turns out that they test positive for Covid or if it's just a regular cold, they will miss the school, they will miss school for up to 10 days. If parents are extra cautious, siblings will be kept home as well. Every time a student without a mask is exposed to Covid, they will be kept home too. There is so much talk about how kids only have mild cases of Covid, so it's no big deal. First, even if that is true, we should still care about the kids who will have severe cases. Second, if we have a classroom where just one student has Covid, no matter the severity, and only half the class is wearing a mask consistently, that would be at least 10 students, if not more, out of the classroom for several days at minimum. The kids will suffer from missed in-person instruction and time with their peers. The teacher will suffer because of increased workload, trying to manage providing at-home materials and support while maintaining their regular classroom. Parents will suffer with missed time from work and the time it takes to get their child tested so they can return to school. If that original student has a sibling in their home that also contracts Covid, then that scenario doubles the negative impact on other students, teachers, and parents. This also only accounts for disruptions that are relatively limited to individuals, students. There is the possibility that we get to a point where we need to shut down a school or the entire district to prevent further spread. If there are parents upset now about requiring masks, imagine the absolute outrage there would be from parents if all of our kids have to switch to virtual learning, even for a short period of time. This is all preventable. Yes, masks are not foolproof, but again, our goal is to keep students in the classroom as much as we possibly can. Why in the world are we still debating on whether universal masking will keep most kids safe and most kids in the classroom where they need to be for their educational, social, and emotional development? Our kids have missed out on so much since March 2020. Let's not have them miss out on even more because some folks want to pretend that things are normal when they are not. Sincerely, Paige Jessie."
And then who did you have? I had two names that were...
I have Monica Smith.
Monica Smith. So did we not get John's printed? Did somebody read John Shepherd?
Yeah, yeah.
You did read John?
That was read.
It was just at the beginning, and I had him. Okay. I just had him as not marked. I wanted to make sure that we didn't miss any. Okay, so I have one from Kate Hand that came in right at the close to the start of the meeting. Dear Board, I'm going to remove names, obviously, redacts names. My son is a very curious child. He is fascinated by science and wants to become a surgeon when he grows up. He sees us and people out in the world wearing masks, so we've explained the reasons to him. It's also the reason we can't go to a crowded beach, theme park, or museum. He understands and adapts, knowing that our sacrifices are for the greater good. Based on last week's meeting, it seems that some members of our school board feel differently. Rather than using the need for masks as an opportunity to teach about community and how we all must play our part, some of you are teaching kids that it's okay to risk harm to others if it's easier or more comfortable. You claim it so children can feel safe at school, but everyone has already seen masks in every other part of their lives, including school last year. My son knows how important masks are, and I cannot imagine the anxiety he would have, he would feel, being in a classroom where no one is wearing one. Besides what this blasé reaction teaches our kids, I worry about the safety of all the children and staff when mask policies are not put in place. A mask is a minor inconvenience. Long-term side effects or death of staff is not. Recently, four teachers in the same Florida county died of Covid. My son has been hospitalized three times from croup. His lungs are not very strong. Each time I think about Covid, I think of the night we raced him to the hospital while I sat in the back with my son, trying to keep him from passing out as he had a hard time breathing, and his lips were turning blue. time breathing and his lips were turning blue. The board's utter lack of common sense regarding a widely enforced safety protocol is baffling and worries me about the other common sense measures you may skip. If you don't believe in a simple measure to protect our kids from a virus that has killed one and a half as many Americans as World War II in less than half the time, do you believe in fire safety, electrical safety, in fixing a gas leak before it kills? Those who voted against mandatory masking against the advice of the CDC and the APA and Cincinnati Children's claim to have done so for such asinine reasons as kids need to see their teachers smile, or we need to get back to normal. This is either a textbook example of the Dunning-Kruger effect, or it's a politically motivated move to earn votes from anti-maskers come November. One is wilfully ignorant, and the other is morally bankrupt. As such, I've lost confidence in your ability to make decisions in my kids' best interests. Because of the chance that COVID could harm my son and others, we have pulled our children from the school and will be unlikely to return. I'm writing to you anyway because I care about my neighbors and my community, and I urge you to demonstrate the same. If masks are made optional, I must request that anyone who voted against the mandate visit every hospital bed, or God forbid, the wake of those affected by this decision, look to the grieving families in the eyes and tell them that it was a personal choice. Adam Hand, parent of two students formerly of Sharpsburg Elementary.
Okay, and I have an email from Monica Smith. She says, "Hi, I just wanted to voice my concern and opinion that if you don't mandate masks, then people won't wear them, and then we are all at greater risk. Look at like what's happening in all the other schools around the country that started back this month and that already had outrageous numbers of COVID in their students and staff. It is a public health concern and important for everyone's safety, like all other required vaccinations to attend school. It is vital. It makes sense like wearing a seatbelt. It's for protection and should not be left up to individual decisions because it puts everyone at risk, unvaccinated and vaccinated people. We have also seen that masks reduce many other sicknesses throughout the year, like cold, strep throat, and the flu. Please choose to protect the students and staff and community in Norwood by making the wise decision in requiring masks. Monica Smith."
All right, that concludes the hearing of the public portion of our meeting. So we'll move on to Section 3 in our agenda, which is the Education Committee Report. Board Member Mrs. Rayber.
So all we have on here for today is the MOU, the Hilton County Educational Head Start. Hold up. So that, that between Hilton County Educational Service Center and Norwood City School District, the partnership for head start at Sharpsburg, Norwood View, and at the Learning Center at Norwood. So I'd like to make a note that we would approve this. It'll be you.
I will second. Any discussion on this?
I would just like to thank Mary for continuing this. This was my wish list, top priority when I came onto the board four years ago, and it obviously took a backseat when we lost Kathy. And the first thing that she did when she came onto our board was ask each of us, what did we want to do? What kind of work did we want to see happen? And I told her, I want a full-day head start. And Mary made this happen, and I didn't know all the things that she had to do, but she's got the connections, and I am just so thrilled that this gets to start this year. So thank you for your work, making this come true for me.
You're welcome. Getting students off to the right start early in life truly makes a difference.
We have so many families that work full day, and so to offer a full-day preschool, I'm just thrilled for it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I get a different motion? Sally is...
All motion.
Thank you.
We'll keep Brandon's up.
Did you hear that, Sally?
Okay, sorry, I shouldn't have thought that.
That's okay.
It's all right.
We wish you were here.
I do as well.
All right. Any further discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
With that, the MOU passes. Thank you, Mrs. Rayber. Next on our agenda, Section 4 Personnel, Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, President Atwood. We do have one resignation. We're sorry to lose Katie Long, a library aide for other employment. Then, in Section 4.02...
We've got two other names up there.
Oh, the top of the page. Oh, yes. And Chris Couch, even though he is leaving us as an aide, he will be a substitute teacher for, so he's really not going. And we are also losing Margaret Buck, who is one of our student assistants. So we wish them well, and like I said, Chris really isn't leaving us. And thank you for pointing him out. It's hard when you...
They're hiding under the staple.
They are hiding under the staple. All right, 4.02, that is the resolution to support the learning stipends for our exempt and classified staff. This is to match the AfSME stipend that was approved last month. It's for the help during the pandemic for learning recovery. 4.03 is a large section of employment under Number 1. We'd like to welcome Darcy March. She is our new PE and health teacher, replacing Jen List. I met her this week at the New Teacher Orientation. She's an experienced PE teacher and a great addition to Norwood. Section 2, we are really just changing job titles to fit the job description, so that's all that's about. Number 3, Extended Services. This is for our counselors and our school psychologists to get scheduling and meet with students before the school year starts. Section 4 is Hiring of Our Coaches, and we have eight or nine coaches we are hiring. We are still looking for a tennis coach, so if anyone knows of someone who would like to coach tennis, we are still lacking in that area. Number 5, this is part of our learning recovery from ESER fundings. We are approving any of our academic teachers for up to 100 hours if they're willing to tutor our youngsters, starting when school begins in August, all the way through June of next year, to make up for learning loss from last year. Number 6, we'd like to welcome back on a part-time basis, Raylin Burton, out of Federal Funds, out of ESER. She's going to come and help us with some social-emotional learning. And then Number 7, that is just a change in status of one of our coaches. And I believe, thank you, that that concludes my report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of the personnel recommendations in 4.01, 4.02, and 4.03.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm excited to see Ms. Burton back.
Yes.
Yeah. That was a nice one.
It's a good surprise. Nice surprise.
And I'm sad to see Maggie Buck go. I saw her in action at Williams when I was subbing, and she was really good.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the Finance Committee Report. Mrs. Camp House?
Thank you, Mr. President. 5.01 is just our... Sorry, I lost my paper. Too many papers here. The CFO report is attached to the agenda for your review, as well as the other financial documents for your approval. Also attached is the change order listings. 5.02, Temporary Appropriations, our budget for the current year. 5.03, this is a new requirement that I notify the board annually if we purchase commercial paper for investments. We purchase commercial paper for short-term investments of our construction funds. We only provide these investments to those companies with the highest rating available for commercial paper. This report I've provided to the board will satisfy the requirements of ORC 135.142C. 5.04, Transfer, Caesar Cash Transfers from the General Fund to our Severance Fund and Athletic Fund. 5.05, Then-and-Now Purchasers. These are some very old invoices that need a board approval, so I can process them. 5.06, Complete Year Providers, Provide Special Education Transportation Services for Fiscal Year '22. 5.07, Inventory Disposals, To Dispose of Some Very Old Laptop Cards to Make Room For Our Students. And 5.0... Let's see, let's stop with 5.07 and do a vote if you don't mind, Mr. President.
That's fine. I'll make a motion to approve items 5.01 through 5.07 as listed.
I'll second.
Any discussion on any of those items? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
5.08 is the Delegate and Alternate for the OSBA Capital Conference that we discussed last week. The board will need to have a motion and a second to approve the delegate and the alternate.
I make a motion to approve Amber Ballard as our delegate.
Do you need a second? I'll second.
And I motion to have Alice as the second alternate.
Oh, thanks.
And I'll second that.
I hope we really get to go.
I do, too.
Any discussion on that?
I hope we really get to go.
Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Before you leave, I have signatures that I have to have tonight, so don't leave without these, please.
Got it. Leave before signing. Got it.
And finally, our last item under Finance, I have volunteer gas agreement. This agreement is for one year only, as I'm not thrilled with the gas rate. It's a little higher than what we're currently paying, but we didn't see any gas prices decrease in the spring like we typically do because we went right into a very warm summer there for a while. So this is the best price that I could find before winter, and I just can't go into the winter season with a variable rate. So we have a fixed-rate contract for one year. Our broker will be looking for better rates so that I can establish a better long-term contract. I have already signed this contract because, as you know, commodities do not trade in the evening, so with your approval, this finishes the contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve the gas agreement.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
All right, we've already had the hearing of the public, so we'll move into Section 7 of our agenda, and that is reports. Does anybody have any board announcements? Nope, we'll move on to 7.02, the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you. I did want to introduce Howie.
7.03, The Great Oaks Report. Mrs. Ball?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a busy summer. I'm going to go back towards the end of July. The ACTE Conference happened at the end of July. Several of our staff members, including our board president, all won awards of recognition for their service to the state of Ohio and community area, excuse me, in career technical education. We had several really awesome breakout sessions. We had several keynote speakers. Our state superintendent, Paolo Di Maria, spoke and announced formally his retirement in September, so we will miss him dearly. Mark Perna, who is a public speaker all across the country, also spoke about his current thing is shifting the paradigm, but he spoke on career readiness. And the thing that I took away most from that is we always say college or career ready, and I think that that's a failure to our students because if you go to college or you go into career tech, you should be career ready. So the whole point is making kids career ready, and it shouldn't be an if-or pathway. So I really like the mentality of making kids career ready, making them community ready, ready to serve back home. And a way that we have started doing that is this year, we've expanded to 15 new college credit plus courses for our students. So kids don't have to choose between a high school traditional college, so to speak, pathway, or a career tech. These kids can follow career tech plus classes while learning about their career tech fields and being certified in that field, so they can graduate with a job, with credentials, and with college credits in their back pocket. So it's a really great way to bridge the gap between college and career and just focus on making them career ready. In keeping with that, we also graduated 17 new firefighters that they just graduated a week and a half ago, and they're already serving out in the community, so we're really proud of that new graduating class. I think I told you guys earlier in the year that we had just opened a new fire burn building at our campus at Scarlet Oaks, so this is the first class to graduate since we've built the new fire building. Upcoming, we have Wednesday, September 8th, the Laurel Oaks ribbon cutting will be our formal opening after the completion of new construction and renovations for that campus. The things that we've been discussing at meetings, we created new blended learning procedures to establish in case a backup is needed so that we can continue educating through the pandemic. And I got an email today that the Oaks is now requiring masks for all associates and staff that began yesterday due to several individual staff members with direct exposure or contracting COVID-19 since the opening last week. So that mask mandate has gone into place starting yesterday for the Oaks campus. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Ballard. 7.04 is the Norwood Community Television Board Report. Board Member Mrs. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a report this month.
All right. 7.05 is the OSBA Legislative Report. Board Member Mrs. Rayber?
Thank you. No vote for tonight, but Ohio Legislature has been in summer recess, July and August, so hopefully September, we'll have some new news.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to 7.06, the Avenues for Success Report. Board Member Mrs. Rarica?
Well, the avenues for success, you know, you can go to Kroger and choose avenues for success as your donation to. They just got their donation from Kroger, and it is $1,411.50. So please, if you shop at Kroger, check... I think you have to do it every year, or you used to have to update yourself every year and re-chose avenues for success. Also, Laura sends us from the Ohio Department of Education concerning program reviews. The Ohio Department of Education reviewed our avenues for success very highly. So, and they sent her an email of the dedication and commitment shows and everyone's contributions to this program. So they've gotten accolades from the Ohio Department of Education. Also, we've seen kids from avenues for success continue on. Say they took the drama classes in avenues for success and then did, if you remember, the Lion King production they did, and now those children are trying out for and doing other things outside of school. So they are taking their skills from avenues for success and taking them on to more things to... to be performers in. And so it was a little movie that they're making for a couple of our, well, Sally's husband. And Mr. Orza have written a book, and they're making a small movie about it, and the avenues for success children have come to try out and are performing in this movie. So pretty darn exciting.
And I want to say thanks to the avenues folks for the bounce back event. I was hoping to get a full list from her to really acknowledge each person who participated and made that event a success. You know, the bounce back event is always a huge success every year, but the amount of things that they had to fill those backpacks was just, I had both hands going like this to try to carry everything. So the amount of coordination that she does between, you know, Walmart and all our community partners, and then all our volunteers, so just kudos to them for stepping up and helping at that event.
And last week, I was feeling a couple parents were emailing me or messaging me, when is she going to send out the before care and after care stuff? And that stuff went out last week, if anyone's wondering.
All right.
Is that a link that we can get for Glenna to share on our Facebook page? Could you see if you can message her to get that? I've been asked that too, and I don't have the links for it.
It's on our website as well, so Glenna, we'll make sure Glenna sees it.
Okay.
All right. Well, that concludes all of the board reports. So the next item is future meeting notification. So September is an incredibly busy month for me. As it stands right now, I'm looking to be out of town on September 7th. But if we move everything back a week, I'm also looking to be out of town like the 23rd when the regular board meeting is. So I would be more apt to participate, keep the meeting schedule the same, and just participate virtually on the 7th, and then be present for the regular meeting on the 16th. But I think we also need to see about possibly adding another special board meeting. The challenge there is, is I'm out of town all next week.
Next, the 23rd next week, you mean?
Yeah. So next week, I'm out of town the whole week. So if we want to have a special board meeting next week, then I will be virtual.
I think the goal would be to try to get everyone here, since we haven't had everyone for both the last, this meeting and the last meeting.
I know. It's been challenging. And I apologize for my travel schedule, but-
What about the first week, September 30th through the-
The 30th through the, so do we want to try and do a special board meeting the week of the 30th? Sometime that week?
I work most evenings.
I mean, so the purpose for that meeting, you know, is, would be to specifically discuss the back-to-school plan. And if we do it the week of the 30th, that gives the DART team two additional meetings to meet together.
So what if we did it on the 3rd? That way you can have that meeting that morning.
Do we have to know now when we're going to have a special meeting?
No, we don't have to know. We don't have to discuss it, I mean, like, we can announce, as long as we announce any special meeting 48 hours before we do it.
We can just do it.
We can just do it. So I didn't know if you guys just wanted to go ahead and put something on the schedule now, and we can always change it.
I can do something, if people are available in the afternoon, I have, Monday, the 30th, I have a gap in the afternoon, but I close at night. So I can't do evenings, but I don't know everybody's work schedule, so.
Right.
I mean, as long as we can just call one 48 hours ahead of time anyways, I would think that we would need one before school starts.
Need what?
What?
That we might need one before school starts.
Okay.
Which is Wednesday. So, but-
All we need is 48 hours before school starts. The DART team meets-
So what about the 23rd?
Have at it.
What about the 23rd? Monday?
So why don't we do this? Why don't, why doesn't the DART team get together tomorrow morning? And then let's look at everything and then decide if we need to do a special meeting on, would be, what, Tuesday?
The 24th. The 23rd is Monday.
No, no, but we need 48 hours. And I don't think they count weekends.
Do weekends don't count, or do they count?
No, weekends don't count.
I close on Tuesday.
We could do-
So if we want it to be before school starts, I would have to do it during the afternoon. But I don't know if anybody's available for that.
Well, next week.
If we declare it today, we can always say we don't need it. I'm just saying, if we schedule it for Monday, and you talk tomorrow morning and find you don't need the meeting, we've already established it.
Well, I mean, either way, so if we do it on Monday, hold on. I'm actually in the air on Monday, flying to the West Coast, so I don't land, I don't land until 2:00 PM on Monday, West Coast time, which would be 5:00 here.
Okay.
And then I have to get a rental car and then get to my hotel, so it'll probably be another-
Can we do like 7?
7?
I would not be available on the 23rd until probably 8. I work until 7:30 that day.
I can do, I can do anytime in the evening that day, even if it's late.
I would be happy if it comes after work. It would not be a problem for me, but I could do anytime on the 24th.
What about you?
I can be flexible. My work is pretty flexible, so whatever we need.
You're out of town regardless.
I'm out of town, so I'm going to be-
But you would like to at least be on the computer.
At least be on the computer, so, but I won't be able to vote.
Right. So I can do anytime in the evening on the 23rd to accommodate her schedule. For the 24th, I would have to do it during the afternoon. I work at 5:00. I think the 23rd gives us a little bit more of a cushion to communicate that to the community, though.
We can also do an emergency meeting if needed, if we want to wait for the DART team and they have a Monday meeting, because I don't need to advertise that quite as far in advance.
An emergency meeting?
It's just another special meeting. It just lessens my requirement.
So that kind of, that saves us a whole day. So then we could, we could wait.
So we could wait for the DART team on Friday, and then we have a Monday meeting?
Is everybody okay with that?
So we want to do 8, we'll plan for 8:00 PM on Monday?
Are you okay with the connotations of an emergency meeting? It sends a different kind of message.
I think the community sent us a message today, so I think it's meeting that need to get it talked about quickly, but we didn't want to cancel tonight's meeting by not allowing them to speak. So I think that meets the best need.
Is 8:00 okay for you guys?
Sally, did you hear? Is it okay for you?
Yeah, I will get here as quickly as I can.
Okay. If you're delayed a few, we can stall for you, don't worry. Get here safely. And that'll put you at like 5:00 afternoon-ish, your time, right?
It will.
Okay.
Barring any travel delays.
If all else fails, whip out your phone and just talk to us wherever you are.
If I'm on a plane, that's impossible.
Right. Hopefully you're not still on a plane at that point.
Right.
You're supposed to land 5:00 our time?
Yes.
Okay. That gives you a three-hour buffer.
Yeah.
It depends who you're flying.
Right?
Yeah.
Weather.
Yeah.
Still a pretty big buffer.
All right. So we'll keep the September 7th committee meeting, and we'll keep the September 16th regular board meeting. So the motion on the table that I'm making is that we're going to adopt those two meeting dates, the September 7th and the 16th. The DART team is going to meet in the morning, and then following that, we may end up making a special meeting. Or not a special meeting, an emergency meeting.
It is a special meeting, it's just a-
Right. It's a different, yeah, it's an emergency. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
So you're saying we may not have this meeting?
Well, let's get the DART team together tomorrow to discuss, and then, that's why we're giving ourselves the extra day for making the emergency meeting.
Okay.
So.
I just think we should have it anyway so we can discuss it. But I agree that we need a day to get the DART information, but I think we should still meet on Monday.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
All right. Last item on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Raraka?
Yes.
And we are adjourned.